Good evening. Welcome to this Zoom webinar. Excuse me a moment here while I adjust my screen. As I said, good evening. Welcome to this Zoom webinar forum with candidates for Bremerton City Council, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kitsap County. My name is Linda Streiskothe and I will be the moderator for tonight's event. The League of Women Voters is proud to be a nonpartisan organization, neither supporting nor opposing candidates and political parties. The League envisions a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. Questions have been submitted to the League by voters through our website. We've consolidated those plus others the public has contributed into the questions I'll ask of tonight's candidates. The questions will cover a range of topics and issues pertinent to the city of Bremerton. All nine of our candidates for Bremerton City Council were invited to attend this forum. Our candidates participating this evening are in District One, Jennifer Chamberlain, District Three, Melissa Watkinson, and Jeff Coughlin, District Five, Michael Gudnow, District Six, Mike Simpson and Anna Mokler, and in District Seven, Eric Younger. Thank you to all our candidates for offering your skills and talents in service to our city. You deserve our respect and we ask that during this forum, you maintain civility with one another. During tonight's format, each candidate will be given 90 seconds to make an opening statement. We will go in the order your name appears on the ballot. Then I'll begin the questions. Each of you in rotating order will have 60 seconds to respond. If you've answered a question and have time remaining, you may speak about a previous question or clarify a statement. At the end of the forum, each candidate will again have 90 seconds to make a closing statement. If you run out of time, you can finish your sentence. And we reviewed the timekeeper function there and we will be maintaining that electronic clock. So it's now time to begin our opening statements. 90 seconds please, and we'll begin with Ms. Chamberlain.
Hello there. I'm Jennifer Chamberlain. I'm representing District One. I've been a Bremerton resident for over 20 years. I think about 23 years. I was a Navy kid back in the day and that's how I ended up here. Something that I'm going to bring to the table when I'm elected to City Council is my lived experience and perspective. Growing up, I say growing up in this town because I was a very young person when I came here. I was 18 when I moved here the week of my 18th birthday. I moved up back out here on my own. I faced a lot of challenges being a young, single mother in this town. And so my lived experience and perspective is something that is sometimes lacking on City Council. And I'm going to speak, you know, from the experience of somebody who's faced housing insecurity, resource insecurity, faced justice involvement. I'm also somebody who has risen above these challenges and gone on to pursue bigger and brighter things. I'm a public school employee. I've been there for over 10 years. I have a strong service ethic. And as a caveat, I'm the only person who wants this position in District One right now. The other candidate has made a very public declaration that he no longer wishes to run. So there'll be two names on your ballot. He has endorsed me and I look forward to serving Bremerton in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Watkinson.
Good evening. Hello, Chalk Ma. My name is Melissa Watkinson and I am here to earn your vote to serve on Bremerton's District Three City Council as a City Council member. I'm a lifelong Washingtonian, the city which I call home and among other 40,000 diverse Bremertonians, 40,000 of whom live and vote within District Three. We deserve strong representation and qualified leaders who have the experience and commitment to a more equitable and sustainable future. I'm determined to support equitable and resilient communities that come together through the development and continuation of programs that have and will continue to shape who we are as Bremertonians. As a social scientist, I'm an active listener and I'm able to create policy that is informed by community and socioeconomic data. I believe that a community is more resilient when we are engaged with one another. So as a City Council member, I plan to host my monthly meetings that are held in the evenings and in locations where most families are able to attend and participate, rotating between neighborhoods of Minette, Evergreen, and downtown, so that everyone's voice is included. I'm uniquely qualified to represent Bremerton and create and implement solutions that are sustainable and equitable. Listening to and understanding community values and challenges is crucial to my core values and what I, how I want to shape local policy. I look forward to serving you.
Thank you. And Mr. Coughlin.
Well, thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, for everybody for attending, and thanks to everybody for being a part of local democracy. My name is Jeff Coughlin. A little about me, I grew up as a big science nerd. I love solving problems and so I went and got my PhD in astronomy. I worked for a big NASA mission called Kepler and there I kind of found another love for bringing people together. I became a science director and ultimately a project management professional via the University of Washington. I've worked with government, private organizations, and individuals to make some big things happen. Locally, I've been living in Bremerton with my husband for almost a decade. He works in the shipyard and I've been fortunate to work from here, most of it out of a great local corking business in the district called Spark Commons. And I've also been volunteering here. I applied for and was selected by Mayor Wheeler in the council for the planning commission where I've served since 2019. On that, I've gained experience listening to experts in the public, planning for our community's future, and interacting with the council. I volunteered for years for the Kitsap Historical Society. I was president and I'm currently vice president and volunteer as director of running the museum right downtown in our district. So I have experience as well, running a local business in the district and interfacing with the city. I've been attending and speaking up at council and commission meetings for years and I'm just deeply embedded in this community. I'm raising my son in this community and I care passionately about its future. So I'm running to represent all 5,500 people in our district to make sure your voice is heard, so we can come together to tackle our most pressing challenges with pragmatic solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Gudnow.
Well, thank you Linda, League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight and everybody who's taking the time out to listen in. It's been a pleasure to serve in City Council for the last almost four years. The Navy brought me to Kitsap County in the 90s at some point, but I bought a house in Bremerton and have loved being a part of the community here for almost 20 years in this house. I ran for council four years ago as an extension to my community involvement. I was involved in lots of community organizing events in the community and I continue to do that. I continue to serve on the board of Kitsap Pride. I'm on the board of the Roxy Foundation, which is about to purchase the building and part of the redevelopment downtown and I've served as the served currently as the past president of the Downtown Business Association. So I, you know, I've really seen firsthand what some of our needs are in the small business community in the neighborhoods. And, you know, over the time I've spent on council, learning how we can make that change, how we can take care of the laws and fun things that are high priorities and mostly I feel like I bring my values to the City Council, to the decision-making that we have to do and I hope I represent people well and I hope that I would have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Streiskothe. Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. I think it's very important that we have these sort of things so that we can educate the public on voter issues and what goes on in the city. As a native of Bremerton, it's always been my objective to serve the community I love. That's why I joined the military and went to defend our country. After retiring from the Army and the National Guard, I continue to protect our community as a corrections officer and deputy sheriff and served 13 years with Kitsap County Sheriff's Office. I'm a longtime member of the Fraternal Order of Eagles and a proud member of the Bremertons American Legion Post 149. And I'm currently serving as your current councilman for District Six, which has been my greatest honor for the past two years. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Mokler.
Good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters for hosting this. I'm Anna Mokler. I'm running to represent the hardworking District Six. I've talked to most of you and we want similar things to live peacefully in our homes, walk safely on our streets and leave a better world for the next generation. We want a good quality of life for our present and our future. I stand for good government that's transparent and responsive, safe streets and strong communities, affordable housing and living wage jobs in a sustainable community. Let our government speak plainly and act rightly with respect for human dignity. Let's slow down speeders so we can wave hello to neighbors as we walk. Bremerton needs union jobs, $15 minimum wage, and employees over contractors wherever possible. I'll advocate for a residency requirement for the Bremerton Police Department and residency incentives for all other city employees because you best serve a community when it's your own. I'll work hard for good housing for all in a sustainable city. And I'll be accessible and effective with a posted schedule of my neighborhood walks, meetings, and other events on my website. These are big ideas. I have workable plans to make them reality on my website, moklerforbremerton.com. Vote for me. I'll be your voice at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Younger.
Bad and cleanup, I guess. Good evening, everyone. Actually, wrong sport. Most everyone else is watching the Seahawks game, so thank you to the 21 attendees that are currently attending this instead of watching the Seahawks game. My name's Eric Younger. I am the current District Seven City Council member. I was first elected to City Council in 2001 when I was appointed to fill a vacancy by the Bremerton City Council, ran for reelection in that fall, and finished the term through 2003, at which time my son was born. And I decided to focus on my family. I got the itch again and then 2012 was reelected to City Council and I've been on ever since. I moved to Bremerton in 1997, so if my math is correct, I've been here for 24 years. I'm a certified public accountant, the master's degree in business administration. And for the past five years, not the current, from 2016 through 2020, I was the Bremerton City Council President. I believe I was elected by my peers for my ability to build consensus and my willing to compromise to get things done. Thank you for hosting this and I'm asking the voters of District Seven, please consider reelecting me for being your City Council member. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, candidates. Now it's time for us to begin our questions. So as a reminder, each of you will have 60 seconds to respond. And our first question will begin with Ms. Watkinson. Question one, what are the top priorities or issues you would like to address during your term in office?
Yes, thank you, Linda. I really want to be making sure that we have all voices at the table and I've had an opportunity to speak with many of the constituents across District Three already. And many of the things that I've heard really come down to three different issues that are all very complex and will require many different unique qualifications to fulfill and address. So that is, you know, accessible and affordable housing, which I imagine we'll have more conversation about later today. Looking at our infrastructure, making sure that we're able to maintain and develop as we continue to grow and develop our city, that we have infrastructure that is sustainable. And the third is environment. We have wonderful parks and water around us and people want to make sure that our water and air and landscapes remain in good quality. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coughlin.
Well, thank you. For District Three here for me, top priority to start is communication. I've knocked on the doors of over 2,500 people now, asking what they want to see better in our community and good things to make sure we keep going. I plan on having regular office hours, being available online at events and holding periodic town halls on specific topics. And I know that when we get all voices to the table, we bring all possible solutions for most pressing issues, we get everyone's voice heard, we can make the best decisions. And based on talking to people, one of the things I want to tackle is basically managing the growth in our region. We've done unprecedented growth and I know that we can build more affordable housing, we can revitalize downtown, we can improve Minette streets and sidewalks and connect the area. We can embrace Bremerton being the place for eclectic small local business. And I think if we do that, it'll lead to a more vibrant Bremerton for everybody. And with a growing town and increased revenue from it, we can use that to help out folks living here with rental and home buying assistance, resources for those experiencing homelessness, addressing inequality, and improving our infrastructure and critical community services.
Thank you. Mr. Gudnow.
I think a central issue is sort of housing stability, affordable housing, enough housing units in the community. And a lot of that, it's a little bit of a house of cards. We have, you know, a need to kind of continue to grow the economy and build more housing. We need to make sure we're incentivizing affordable units as we, as we do add housing stock to the community. We need to get the wages up. We also need just more jobs here that pay a living wage. It's all these things to create balance. We can't just focus on one thing like building housing. We need to help people get into housing. We need to keep people from losing their housing. We need to, you know, create housing stock. People should be able to, you know, be generations and be able to stay in the city of Bremerton and buy homes and live here. Thank you.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Linda. One of the most important things that we can do is to continue the growth that we have in our city. The shipyard does create a very stabilizing force in our community that employs about 40% of our workforce. We need to attract more jobs to the area so that we can raise the wages that are in the city. A livable wage is something that's more than the median wage that we have right now. And if we are able to lift that, then we will be able to successfully help people get into housing. We can also help ease some of the regulatory burden that prevents people from being able to build a home, modify a home, or move into a home. And I'm happy to say that we have done some of that by modifying our ADU ordinance. And we can continue with these sort of things in the next two years while I'm on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mokler.
Thank you, Ms. Streiskothe. I'm working to improve quality of life for Bremerton. Just really basic bread and butter things in a world that is really being slammed by a climate crisis and by income inequality and by social injustice. All of these are coming to the fore. And yet, the more doors I knock on, the more I see that the people of Bremerton are like, fix the potholes. Get us some sidewalks. Just really the things that make it possible to build strong communities is to be able to walk, walk with your kids and around the neighborhood. That's everything is part of that. It's to bring all of us forward together with safe communities that are safe because we know our neighbors and that's what I'm working on.
Thank you. Mr. Younger.
Thank you. I plan on staying the course, doing what I have been doing. Number one, answering questions, concerns of District Seven residents, representing their interests if they have issues with the city of Bremerton. I'm also not really about talking points. I'm more about action. If you go to my website, ericyounger.com, you'll see the ordinances I specifically wrote and with the approval of the council were passed to address affordable housing and roads and sidewalk funding. So just stay the course, listen to my constituents, hear their concerns, take action based on what they want and keep on coming up with innovative solutions to address the issues that are quite frankly, we've had issues about affordable housing, streets and roads ever since I've been on council. And I'm proud that I've actually taken steps to address them. Thank you.
And Ms. Chamberlain.
Oh, thank you. So yeah, we're going to be talking a lot about housing. Our nation's facing a housing crisis. First things first, we can't assume we know the right answer without talking to people who are directly affected. We have a lack of participatory democracy opportunities for people. They can come to City Council meetings and talk, but how else are we involving people who are directly impacted by this housing crisis? Are we going directly to them to ask them what their needs are? I'm definitely interested in promoting opportunities for young folks and making sure that we have networks of people who are currently serving in service capacity that are tighter. Sometimes, too often, our institutions and our organizations are in what's an organizational silos. So I'd really love to work to build networks and bridges between organizations that are doing good work in our communities so that we can bring opportunities and network with people affected by housing insecurity, by other issues in our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Mr. Coughlin. Please describe your relevant experience that prepares you for this role on City Council.
Fantastic. It'll be a little repeat of my intro, but as I said, I've got a lot of unique skills. My background in science has prepared me to be able to know how to parse data, figure out what good data is, collect it, and make decisions based on it. Again, I'm a certified project manager, got a certificate degree from the University of Washington, and that has allowed me to know how to interface with stakeholders, how to manage projects, budgets, be able to make things happen on time and on budget. Locally, as I said, I've been involved in council meetings for a while, speaking up. Serving on the planning commission has been experience of a lifetime. It is great to actually hear from people directly to dive into our local zoning codes, to be able to be part of a body that is planning out for Bremerton, not just the next one year or five year, but you know, 50 years out and making sure that we grow sustainably. And finally, it's just living here for close to a decade. It's being part of the community, being involved and volunteering, knowing folks as I have in the district for so long. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gudnow.
I think I have years of experience in the nonprofit. I've worked for a nonprofit, it's almost exclusively for the last 20 years and most of those have been serving human services, dealing with really a wide, diverse spectrum of folks in our community. But I also have 20 years of military experience, you know, kind of understanding the big moving pieces within government. I also have served on Bremerton's Planning Commission. I have a bachelor's degree in workforce education and a master's degree in organizational leadership. But I think one of the biggest things that I probably bring is four years of experience on council and, you know, learning the way that we get things done and, you know, what we can do and finding the ways to make that change. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Streiskothe. So one of the things that I bring to the tables, and I'm a native. I was born here and raised here and I've seen the changes that have occurred in our city and changes in demographics, the changes to the landscape. With my time in the military, I spent a considerable amount of time on staff and retiring. With one of my last jobs is an acting sergeant major. I have the organizational skills and experience to bridge gaps, build teams, and make things happen. Working for the sheriff's office, I was a problem solver. I got to go through and help people with their issues. And in the past two years, since I've been on the council, I've seen how it works, understand the limitations that we have and the capabilities that we do have and how to make them work. And I'm, you know, a very good communicator and I love to talk to folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mokler.
Ms. Streiskothe. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
You are.
Good. Well, I've been an insulation contractor, a union printer, a wetland scientist, and I taught writing and critical thinking at City University. And as I evolved, along with, you know, leaping from one dying industry to another, I learned how to listen and I learned how to analyze. And my inner geek totally came out. I believe that I am able to look at the kind of material that comes through City Council, which I've been following since 2018, like the 2018 pavement analysis report, and analyze it and then listen to the constituents and represent them. That's the job of a counselor is to think about the people you represent. Thank you.
Mr. Younger.
I believe the question is, what makes you qualified to be on City Council? My answer to that is, one, as I mentioned earlier, I'm a certified public accountant. I have a master's degree in business administration. But more importantly, I have 12 years' experience on the Bremerton City Council. With that 12 years, within that 12 years, I served five years as council president. As council president, you are exposed to and more involved than most of the other council members because you're setting the agenda, you're setting committee assignments, you're running, you're having daily communications with the administration. What I'm getting at is I have the experience to continue to be on City Council and be an effective council member. I know how things are done in Bremerton and I know how to get things done. Thank you.
Ms. Chamberlain.
I believe the qualifications are to be a registered voter and live in your district, so I meet the minimum qualifications at the bare least, right? So I really believe that City Council is a position that should be accessible to anybody in the community that's willing to put in the hard work for it. That's what I do. I've worked hard all my life. I'm going to work hard for Bremerton. And I've got hustle. I've done every job in this city from slinging coffee to being a grant administrator. I just finished my master's degree in public administration. I have an organizing and activism background, but I decided that boots on the ground are important, which I still continue to do through my door knocking. I've knocked on about 800 doors and taken about a few hundred community issue surveys distributed, a few thousand. But I decided that the real change happens at a policy level. I love balancing budgets. I love looking at numbers. I love asking deep questions and finding out the real reasons behind what's happening and not just what we assume. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Watkinson.
Yeah, I really think that this is a question that's asking who and how are you going to be a productive voice for the community? And I think I am qualified to do that with a master's degree in policy studies. I have served as a chair within a local environmental justice committee. I have experience working within government and across agencies. I'm currently an equity and environmental justice manager within a state government agency. And I have a lot of experience in community organizing, so the ability to listen actively and activate the community is really critical for this role. I think, you know, additionally, my experience again as a social scientist helps me to really understand data and community voices and translate that into effective policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Mr. Gudnow. What would you do to encourage economic development and economic diversity in the city of Bremerton?
I think one of the struggles that we have is we have, we have empty spaces. We have empty, we have a lot of big spaces. Unfortunately, a lot of spaces, we had big business here. We had big stores here before the Kitsap Mall opened and like so many downtowns across the country, you know, we had this exodus. And we've got to really get creative and we have to probably find a way to do some marketing and find some way to, you know, make adjustments. We have been doing that with zoning and, you know, And, uh, you know, and I'm actually proud to say that, you know, sometimes we zone something and we see it's not working and we can, uh, dial that back in. But I think we've got a, we've got a, we've got a lot of space here and we need to find ways to, to use some of this empty space and, uh, find incentives to get businesses in there, uh, get out there and market Bremerton is a great place to do business. I think that'll, uh, that'll get the ball rolling, uh, to help with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Good. So what we need to do is we need to market Bremerton because Bremerton is an awesome place to have, to do business. Um, we've got everything that you need here. We have office space if you need it. We've got infrastructure that, that, that's, that can support it. And we've got, uh, we've got a great population base that, that, that are, are employed. The, uh, the tech giants that are over in Seattle employ a lot of the folks that live here. And what better way to, uh, to get those, those folks that normally would work in Seattle that live here to work from their homes and work from this area and work for work inside Bremerton? This is, this is one of the easiest ways that we can make, make this happen. And we can encourage the, encourage this to continue and to grow. And I think that's, that's one easy thing. Also easing some of the regulatory burden to encourage businesses to come in. That's it. That's how we do this.
Thank you. Ms. Mokler.
Thank you. Economic development and economic diversity. Well, economic development is something that I think we're already working on. If you look at the mayor's figures for the permit fee income over the past few years, that's one type of economic development. But for economic diversity, which an ecosystem needs in order to have resiliency down the line, I think we need to have, I, I disagree with the statement that we have everything you need here in Bremerton. I think it would be good to be able to buy a stapler in Bremerton or to make a set of copies or to do any of the small things that any small business routinely needs. Many people have said that they are tired of driving up to Silverdale um, to get everything that they need for business or even for their at-home business. So I wouldn't, I would encourage that. Okay. I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Younger.
Yeah, interesting question. Economic development and economic diversity. First, I would caution, um, Bremerton as a market economically is doing quite well. Uh, on a city perspective, our revenues are doing well, even despite the pandemic. Our retail sales are strong. As Ms. Mokler mentioned, our permanent activity is basically through the roof. Um, need to be careful on marketing Bremerton. Years ago, I came up with the idea of when we were under different times about move to Bremerton. No one's saying that anymore. The fact of the matter is that market forces are in play. And you have a lot of people that are in the Seattle market that can't afford it, that are in high-tech jobs or whatnot. They're being allowed to tell work. Gradually, what's happening here in Bremerton is that those entrepreneurs, uh, especially with the younger generation, don't stick with firms like Microsoft for a long period of time. They can often go and start their own companies. So it's going to happen. Just don't get in the way.
Ms. Chamberlain.
You know, um, we can talk about economic development and diversity, but, uh, you know, if people have more money, they'd spend more money. And we live in, uh, a state that's most regrettably taxed states in the union. And what happens is that, uh, trickles down through municipalities. They have to make up revenue in lots of different ways. I'm super curious to find out, uh, you know, how people of color, uh, different, uh, different folks in our community are fined and feeed. But I wasn't able to obtain that information from the municipal court level. It's not available. It's not something they collect. What are other ways that municipalities are, um, you know, finding and feing and taking money from residents that could be freed up to grow the economy and spend more money going out to eat? Um, I'm, uh, definitely, uh, interested in finding ways to foster small business ownership and find ways to support small businesses in our community too, by offering incentives for some of that unused space uh, to be utilized. Tacoma had a really great project where they offered like a tax break for a few years. Wouldn't that be great if we did that for new business owners?
Thank you. Ms. Watkinsen.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, two of the key aspects for supporting our economic development and diversity is really addressing opportunities for tourism and making and increasing Bremerton to be a desirable location uh, for people who want to live and work here. That way we can get businesses who are desiring to open up their business within Bremerton. We also really need to focus and continue to support the local and small businesses that are already here. We could, you know, we, if you ever go into, um, Bainbridge Island, you can see that there are people taking the fast ferry into town. And we have those same opportunities, um, for tourism in Bremerton as well. And businesses who are really, um, hoping to thrive, um, with the community around us. And if we can address, uh, opportunities for, for growth to increase tourism. Um, and, you know, address our parks and shorelines and make it a desirable city. I think we can increase our opportunities here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Coughlin.
You know, I've talked to so many people now that even with the growth we've had, they're asking, why are some of the big buildings downtown still empty? Why is there no full-service affordable grocery store? And so many people really want to see this, you know, community thrive. Uh, I'm an active member of the Downtown Bremerton Association and the Chamber of Commerce and the Visit Bremerton Advisory Committee. Um, and that's what I want to see, a thriving downtown, a thriving manette with an affordable grocery store that attracts community and visitors. I think that improves everything for everybody. So what are the actual solutions? You know, talking to folks for some of those big vacant buildings, I like a carrot and stick approach. Um, try and find out if there's a financial incentive to help get them fixed up to rent at reasonable rates. But if not, we should consider a stick of something like a vacancy tax. Uh, I'd like to work with the Downtown Bremerton Association to become a Main Street organization, which would bring in funding for the city. I'd like to see the city be a little more customer service friendly for small business startups. And we should encourage on the diversity angle, things like the BIPOC Business Forum, uh, that again, makes resources available to those in the community. And part of it is just getting the council on board of directly funding the tourism and some of these initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Mr. Simpson. How can the city address homelessness in a way that will alleviate the problem rather than dealing with emergencies on a day-to-day basis?
Oh, what a great question. So, uh, one of the ways that the city is dealing with it right now, we're working in partnership with, uh, with the Bremerton Rescue Mission. And also with the Salvation Army. Unfortunately, both of those, uh, those facilities are, are tired and outdated and not up to code. So we have been, we have been working with them and housing, uh, some of our homeless in the quality and, and the midway. We've also been integrating, uh, and continuing work on Pendleton Place, which is up on Kitsap Way. And we, uh, we anticipate that this will be, uh, online soon, uh, meaning the end of spring, beginning of summer. And that will be a one-stop shopping center for, uh, for our transient folks. Um, they'll be able to get their, their mental health and addiction issues, uh, and any other services that they need there. Um, also they will be housed and that is how we're going to deal with it. Um, we can evaluate this and continue on. Thank you.
Ms. Mokler.
Thank you. Pendleton Place is 72 units of supportive housing. You've seen it out there by the cemetery on Kitsap Way. The framing is done. The cladding is done on at least one wing. I understand they're putting in the electric and plumbing. This is moving forward. Kitsap Mental Health will be there. I believe Kitsap Community Resources, um, the idea of Pendleton Place is to help people take a breath, get rested, get the skills back and move forward into affordable housing, which brings us to the missing middle of Bremerton housing. Um, the accessory dwelling units or mother-in-laws are great. They're approved, but they aren't, they don't exist yet. Boarding houses, cottages, uh, cottage communities like the ones at 15th and Snyder, tiny house communities, places for people who are starting out or restarting. That's what we really need here at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Younger.
Yeah, if anyone here tonight has the ultimate solution, I'm more than willing to hear it. And let's go run with it because, uh, in my opinion, there isn't an ultimate solution. Homelessness has so many different causes. This is an, uh, issue that's been before the city council for many, many years. I do believe the city of Bremerton has taken the right steps. As was already mentioned, we have Pendleton Place, which is in District Seven. We also renewed the navigator program, which is having a mental health person be on call for when police officers, uh, respond to an incident. Really, that really could be useful to have a mental health professional. I believe in many cases homelessness is, uh, hand in hand with drug and mental health issues for the majority of causes, but not all. Um, so we need to address that and the city is, is putting programs in place. And we actually need more funding from the county and from the state to be able to offer more programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chamberlain.
So somebody who has, I've been transient, um, in my life. Uh, I've lived in halfway houses. I've lived on couches. I've lived in basements where I could hear rats chewing through the wall. Um, the solution for me was, um, there was, it, it took a lot of work and I have privilege. There's no solution to homelessness. There's no solution to houselessness. We need to normalize it. We need to find kindness. Uh, the people that helped me rise above were not people that were, um, judgmental on whether or not I was abusing a substance or whether I had a mental wellness issue. They were people who cared and loved and, uh, provided, uh, solutions that were accessible. And it took time. It took time. And again, I had privilege when I was able to rise above that. Um, I think that, uh, having, uh, done service at the Salvation Army, I see they are overwhelmed. And again, as Ms. Mokler mentioned, there's a gap. There's a gap of affordable housing. I work 60 hours a week, sometimes more to afford my apartment. It's ridiculous. We need to build connections with our rental agencies and other organizations to provide a solution.
Thank you. Ms. Watkinsen.
Hi, yes, I think that, you know, programs and places like Pendleton Place and the kinds of partnerships that they're doing with the Kitsap Mental Health and KCR are really important. And I really think that the city and our, us, uh, elected officials should be focused on identifying how that continues to support, um, and address the homelessness within the city of Bremerton. I also want to acknowledge that, you know, the police are no longer responding to non-criminal cases based off the new legislation. And so a lot of those, uh, incidences may be about people who, um, are experiencing homelessness. I heard from the Bremerton firefighters who are now the ones most likely to respond to those incidences that they are in need of training and additional capacity, um, to be able to respond to those incidences and providing them with information on how to connect them with KCR and Kitsap Mental Health will also be beneficial, uh, in that process.
Thank you. Mr. Coughlin.
Actually, I'm knocking on doors. I will never forget the mother of two I talked to for 40 minutes who experienced homelessness when her husband or abusive husband kicked her and her kids out. I've talked to somebody who went through drug addiction, is now a drug counselor, somebody who is a social worker of people with mental illness. Somebody who's going to be evicted in two weeks, um, and looking for solutions. You know, I've sat down with the United Way Resource Director that runs many programs in our community. I've got a meeting on the books, the Bremerton Housing Authority Director. I've talked to the police and fire chief now. And of course, heard from so many business owners and residents who, who were also impacted. So my values is that as the richest nation on this planet, we should have stable housing for everyone, food, medical treatment. Things as basic as a place to go to the bathroom. And ultimately, we need programs that are, that are proactive, not reactive, and are tailored to individual needs and have a long-term plan for people. So for solutions, in addition to a housing-first approach, I'd like to bolster the city navigator program. Additionally, have an entire navigator center where individuals can get resourced, all the services they need in one place. And you have long-term solutions because people living in tents and parks and sleeping in businesses and backyards, it isn't a long-term solution for the city and, and they deserve better. And I know we can do better.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Goodnell.
Yeah, so clearly a, a huge challenge, uh, and something I think, uh, many of us are concerned about. And I like that the way that the question was, uh, phrased about, you know, what, what can we do at the, at the beginning? And, and I touched on that earlier, but we have to keep, you have to keep people in their housing and make getting into housing more accessible and making it, uh, more affordable. One of the things that I'm proud that council passed, uh, was, uh, and we did this, I believe, two years ago, um, was a rental assistance program. And so that was a, a trial program that did so well, we've re-upped it and, uh, it's a partnership with Bremerton Housing. And they've, um, uh, I think basically matched the funds, uh, because it was so successful. But how do we, how do we keep people in their house? So somebody who's on the verge of losing their housing and, and getting into this, uh, uh, you know, uh, transient life, like if we can keep them in their house, if we can get them easier access to their house, um, and we can get more housing available.
Our next question will begin with Ms. Mokler. There are no public facilities for human hygiene in downtown Bremerton. Will you vote to allocate funds to set up and manage toilets and hygiene centers? And if, if so, or if not, why or why not?
Is a hygiene center what I think it is, like a place where you can wash up?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, most definitely. Um, and in fact, quote, several voters have mentioned that there used to be public baths or mobile public baths. I think just it's so easy to get dirty when you haven't got a place to live. Uh-huh. It's just straightforward like that. And that makes it tough to do everything else. It makes it tough to go for a job interview. It makes it tough to do almost anything. And it lifts your self-respect. And yeah, I think it's definitely something we should do. Um, was there some concern about this?
Um, I.
I'm sorry. I'm asking you a question. My bad.
That's okay. It was just a question submitted from our audience.
Well, yes, resoundingly, yes.
Uh, Mr. Younger.
So, uh, we do have hygiene centers in Bremerton. Salvation Army offers the hygiene center. And I believe St. Paul's Church also has a hygiene center. So, uh, maybe the question is, do we need to have more hygiene centers? Really, before I give an answer, yes or no, up or down, I need to have more information about how those two are being utilized, what their successes are, what their problems are. I mean, it's easy to say, of course, yes, but we need to weigh the pros and the cons and figure out what the best fit is. I'm open to listening. See, I've been seeing some letters to the city council expressing my need. So therefore I'm very open to hearing about the problem and coming up with a solution. But I can't say yes or no. We need to add more hygiene centers.
Thank you. Ms. Chamberlain.
Yeah, absolutely. But, um, my first question is, don't we already have public hygiene centers? They're just closed at night. We have a lot of public parks with bathrooms. So one of the projects that I've done, um, a community beautification project is I, I helped clean up an alley, cleaned up a lot of poop, cleaned up a lot of needles. Um, so those are two health concerns that, uh, you know, I would love to address. I don't want people, uh, out there getting infections and, um, and having to poop in public. So yeah, absolutely. Uh, we need more spaces. One of the problems that I found at Salvation Army when I did community service there was that they do limit who gets to take a shower. I don't know if you know that or not. Uh, not everybody that comes in gets to take a shower that night. It's kind of like, you know, they pick and choose because there's just not, maybe there's just not capacity for that there. So how do we build that capacity? Um, and I, I don't really think this, I, I think we do need to build this as an issue. We need to support these services, but we also need to make sure people who are cleaning the services and who are using the services are healthy and safe in that way. Good question.
Thank you. Ms. Watkinsen.
Yeah, I, I, I really think that there's a lot of aspects that, um, we could be really focusing on in terms of addressing homelessness overall. I think that's really the root of that. Uh, I do, I would support an allocation of funding to continue to increase the capacity for, uh, hygiene stations. Though we've seen in other cities, cities spend millions of dollars on these kinds of stations that go across city, the cities and and they become, um, more of a hazard than, uh, a productive use of the funds. And so I think partnering with an agency, an organization who, um, really has the opportunity to work with communities who would be using these centers would be critical. Um, I also think. I also think we need to consider adding needle drop boxes within parks and other areas where, so we can continue to provide hygienic options. Thank you.
Mr. Coughlin.
Yeah, you know, we're running the museum right downtown. We've experienced, you know, the impacts of not having places for people to go to the bathroom firsthand. There's been human excrement in our in our waste baskets in the parking garage downtown. I have employees that frequently have to step over puddles of urine. Ideally, yes, we should have long-term, we should have resources that help people long-term to alleviate homelessness. But in the short term, it's here. And so, yes, we should absolutely have things as basic as places for people to go to the bathroom. It's just part of being decent human beings and it benefits our entire community when we have this and they're not having to go in the stairwells of parking garages and alleys. So you know, I appreciate there's definitely details to be worked out and what form and what location. But to me, it's a, yeah, it's a simple win-win for everybody if we can get those in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goodnow.
Yeah, I, I mean, I support, you know, finding some solutions on this. Ms. Younger mentioned that we did have a community member just past a week or so propose a solution and bring the need up. And, you know, the, a big, a big issue to me is, is just restrooms and like, I think Ms. Chamberlain said, you know, a lot of them lock up at sunset and, but even if there's a twenty-four hour one at, you know, St. Vincent de Paul and you're at Evergreen Park, that's a track if you need to use the restroom quickly. So I think we do have to find some ways to do that. And maybe, you know, I feel like, you know, it used to be there were public restrooms. There were restrooms that cities maintained. And I think there were, there were problems and they've gone away. They've been padlocked. They've been removed. And maybe there's a way to look to find a way to do that smartly and safely and to offer some kind of basic service things.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Iskut. That's a great question. You know, public sanitation and public hygiene are important aspects of public safety and are something that the city should, should be managing. And that's why when, when the grant proposal for Louhan Park came forward and our Parks Director wanted to, wanted to have a $200,000 bathroom, I really balked at that. With a $200,000 bathroom, that's a porcelain palace and you can actually put porta potties on site for forty-two years and have them cleaned out by, by our, not by our city staff, but by a contractor that would come in and revitalize these facilities. So it's, it's an issue that is ongoing and as we retrofit our parks, we can add the capacity of having these sort of facilities there. We do have park facilities that have no bathrooms. The park up on Arvon has zero and we need to address this.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Mr. Younger. Do you use a race equity lens in your decision-making? Please give an example and describe your process if you do.
Okay, interesting question. There's a timely event that I think would fit perfectly in that. So don't have to take my word for it. You can always look it up at the Kitsap Sun. But I've been the most vocal opponent of this administration's hiring practices in that for department heads, this city, by and large, does not go outside the organization and looking for candidates for department-level positions, most recently the police chief. I've been the most vocal critic of this practice. I've been chastised for speaking up on this. I've had emails from city employees saying, what are you doing? We don't need to pick a person of color just for that. I am not saying that. I am saying, open up the opportunities so everyone can apply and we pick the best candidate. I've been fighting for this for years. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chamberlain.
Well, yeah, and I, as a white person, I'm still learning, right? And I should constantly keep learning. I'm not out there, I'm just going to speak in plain language because that's what I do. I'm not out there to be a white savior and to think that I know the solutions for anything. There's people already out there who are doing good work, whose voices aren't being heard. So they need to be elevated and we need to step back sometimes as white folks. And so, and really, I mean, I could give examples. I don't feel like I need to because it would just, I think, really, yes, I see things through a racial equity lens. Still on an evolving learning curve on that as a white person and I will respect and turn over the reins whenever I can.
Thank you. Ms. Watkins.
Yes, I, I believe I view the world through a racial equity lens. I'm a citizen of the Chickasaw Nation and also descend from the Chalk Town Nation of Oklahoma. And I also have descendants from places in Europe. So I have both the privilege and the burden of being a white-passing mixed-race person. And this means that I have the superpowers of code-switching and building bridges and really an opportunity to be a voice for those who don't have, typically have a voice. And so one of the ways that I choose to do that is really do the work of uplifting others who may have different and less privileged experiences as I do. And I hope you'll join us on Saturday for the Seat at the Table event at the Roxy at eleven AM where we can hear from local women of color leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coughlin.
Yeah, going door to door, I've talked to a lot of people that want to see, obviously equitable hiring in the police department and city staff. And people who want to see equitable funding, distribution across the city when there's projects for, you know, things like streets and sidewalks. I've gone and talked to the BIPOC business owners. So, you know, personally, I'm an L G B T individual, so I grew up knowing what it was like to be one kind of minority. My husband's a person of color and I've seen, you know, racial discrimination directed towards him firsthand. And I value continuously discussing and working on this. So as far as a race equity lens, I think it's about bringing the, bringing the data to the table in every council decision. We should have socioeconomic and racial data when we make decisions in front of the council to make sure that we're constantly thinking about it and addressing it. I'm glad to see, you know, that we have the Racial Equity Advisory Committee for the council to give specific recommendations and feedback. And I think all of this is about getting everyone's voices heard, everyone to the table. And the council, you know, needs to actively fund, fund this effort to make sure that we're always constantly working on it. Thank you.
Mr. Goodnow.
Um, yeah, so I, I try to, to look through things that are race equity lens. I'm learning all the time what that means. And in, in just seeing where, where things have failed in the past and where there's microaggressions and where there's barriers for folks. I was really proud to help us start the Race Equity Task Force. I'm proud to co-chair it. I was proud when we passed the Resolution for Equity and Inclusion, which Mr. Younger was really instrumental in helping us move that forward. But, you know, as kind of Ms. Chamberlain mentioned, like, it's, it's really, it really feels out of place to, to talk about how I did that and how I do that. But I do my best to do that. I'm learning every day. Working on race equity has been a privilege and very humbling. And I look forward to getting better all the time.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson.
Viewing the world through a race equity lens is basically, basically, it's, it's, it's a blinder. It means that you see racism everywhere. And you see racism where there's not. This is unfortunate. Because if you look for the color purple in the world, you'll find it everywhere. And this is the problem. We focus on these things that divide us when we actually need to focus on the things that bring us all together. We need to express the commonality that we all have. We all live in Bremerton. We all want a safe place to live. We, we don't want to be told who, where we work, who we love, or what we do in our, in our free time. We all should focus on the things that bring us together as a community rather than trying to pigeonhole everyone into little, little tiny, tiny pockets that divide us. Because when we're divided, we're at each other's throats.
Thank you. And Ms. Mokler.
Thank you. A race equity lens. I do my best. I've been doing my best since I was four. I keep working at it. I get a little better all the time. Specifically for city council, I agree with Councilor Younger that there needs to be greater diversity in the city workforce, but I disagree that it should come from the top. I like the idea of promoting from within and the only resolution that I can find of promoting from within and having diversity, having the workforce of Bremerton City look like the population of Bremerton, which seems only fair, is to begin working at entry-level jobs, at lower-level jobs, developing internships with high school students, technical school students, and, and building people who are ready to work for the city of Bremerton. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will start with Ms. Chamberlain. If elected, how would you work with area tribes? How would you, how would your understanding of tribal sovereignty impact your work?
When I'm elected, I'll absolutely, you know, work with our neighboring tribe, the Sequamish Tribe. We have, you know, we have a lot of different tribes going on. We have issues having to do with jurisdictional inconsistencies. Sometimes I think our state has been working really hard to have officers who can be cross-jurisdictionally trained so they can go between, you know, tribal and non-tribal land. We do have a problem on reservations across our country, but with people who are victimized and not being able to seek retribution for somebody who's not a tribal member. So if there's any way to, you know, get our officers to continue to keep this certification, that's something I'm going to support. And definitely support, I mean, you know, there's a lot of ways that, that we can support each other, but really just to kind of, this is again where you're going to turn over the reins and defer to somebody, to somebody else. So I would definitely be on the side of deferring to our neighboring tribes for a lot of issues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Watkins.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I've worked with tribes in Washington State for nearly a decade, both, you know, professionally and I've also was raised by a family who, my family who is Upper Skagit. So I grew up here harvesting salmon and crab and value our ecosystems and have learned how incredibly important the ecosystems are in relation to different tribes in our region. And I have reached out to the Sequamish Tribe and aim to meet with their tribal council and go through their protocols as they determine to make sure that we can build strong relationships together. Honoring their sovereignty as a tribal nation is incredibly important. And I aim to work in collaboration with the Sequamish Tribe on making sure that we can address challenges that are across the region and particularly of concern to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coughlin.
I think one of the privileges of volunteering for the museum for so long has been getting to learn about some of these issues. I'm really proud of the museum's work, especially in the past five to ten years of reassessing the way that the museum and the historical society operate and appropriated culture and items from the tribes. And so the museum has made a real concerted effort to, to reach out, to try and right some historic wrongs and to serve as a platform to honor the tribes and our indigenous people. And what I've learned out of that and watched the museum work on it is it's really about reaching out and not just once repeatedly reaching out and making sure that, that people feel welcome to speak up and to actively solicit their impact. So when decisions come before council, I mean, first any decision at all, but especially decisions that impact our tribal neighbors, we should be actively reaching out multiple times and making sure that they are able to, to come speak up, work with us ahead of time and be part of the entire decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goodnow.
Now, I've had the pleasure to work with a tribe on different things like community, although nothing really through city council over the last few years, but I just think it's hugely important that, you know, we, we recognize the land that we're on. We've had some discussions about formally doing that at council meetings. It hasn't had any traction yet. But I think that we could, you know, we, we just need to consider them on a partner and make sure that we're you know, not leaving them out of any conversations that would be pertinent. So I, I would look forward to any opportunity to work with the tribes. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. District Six has the only piece of property owned by one of the tribes. We have the smoke shop in District Six, or on Calhoun. And the city has interacted with, with the Quinault tribe, which owns the piece of property and has a contract with them to provide the bright goods and services for them. And so the goods and services that the city provides are water, power, police and fire service. And we will continue to, to honor that agreement with, with the Quinault tribe to service this business, which is on their property. And as, as we learn to grow with this business, we will continue this, this relationship that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mokler.
Thank you. So the major thing that I can bring to work with the tribes is shoreline management throughout Bremerton to improve habitat, to improve shellfish for harvesting, to improve nursery habitat all along there and to make sure that there's access to that habitat everywhere. There's a lot of inputs that come from an urban area that are pretty deleterious to shellfish. I'm sure we all know that, but also for the, the nursery fish that should be in there. And that's habitat that we can, we can actually create or improve or restore. That's something that I know about. For the rest of it, of course, I respect. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Younger.
Yeah, Ms. Straisgus, could you repeat the question again, please?
Yes. If elected, how would you work with area tribes? How would your understanding of tribal sovereignty impact your work?
Okay. Well, if re-elected, I'll continue the course, but I think there's some room for improvement. So I was thinking about this as listening to everyone's answers and Mr. Simpson's correct. There is only one tribal property and that's on Calhoun. It's the smoke shop owned by the Quinault. But the city of Bremerton is heavily involved with the Sequamish Nation when it comes to environmental issues. Basically, we have to get them to sign off for anything that requires a shoreline permit, various different permits like for Kitsap Lake even, anything have to do with salmon, salmon recovery in our streams. So the administration largely does that. But having think about it, I'm open, you know, council goals long been increasing public outreach. As council president, I made the outreach to the Navy to cement that relationship better and with the Bremerton High School, their youth advisory committee. Sequamish Nation is interested in having some type of meeting. I'm open to that, too.
Thank you. Our next question will start with Ms. Watkins. Should parking in the downtown area be greatly reduced or greatly expanded? Please explain your response.
We have nineteen people, nineteen percent of our population in District Three who are commuting to work with public transportation. One percent is biking to work. And then we have about eighty percent who are driving. about eighty percent who are driving to work individually. And I really think to address our parking challenge, we can be looking at ways to incentivize carpooling. So this would likely not change the number of parking spaces. Remember, we are going to be doubling our population within the next 20 years. So that seems unrealistic. But I do think that we can replace some of those parking lots with electric car charging stations. And we can continue to work with our small businesses in downtown Bremerton to make sure that everyone who is employed there can have a place to park. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Coughlin?
I've talked to a lot of residents now who are frustrated by the lack of parking and by really hodgepodge enforcement. I've talked to a lot of business owners who may not stay here because of the lack of parking, somebody who can't get their volunteers to be able to come in. And I've talked to a lot of employees who have to do the parking lot shuffle every two hours. And even, you know, shipyard employees who admit they park downtown because they only get a ticket once or twice a month. So it's worth the cost. And, you know, personally, I value more walkability, bikeability, mass transit, and we should absolutely plan for that and invest in it. But the reality is we're going to have cars for the foreseeable future, and we need more parking downtown to make it thrive and even over in Monette. And so what I would do for solutions, let's renegotiate the impark contract to have more equitable enforcement. Honestly, put a little pressure on the shipyard and at the same time work with the Navy to get more parking garages. For them, I've heard great solutions of increasing from two hours to four-hour durations to give people more time to shop downtown, extend daily parking passes to business employees. And honestly, we have so many surface lots, we could turn a few of those into garages and then turn the rest into things like affordable housing, and that's a win-win solution.
Mr. Goodnow?
Well, this is a tricky question. It's another one that I wish there was one solution that somebody could provide us that we could just do. Parking is a really tricky thing to build your way out of. It's really expensive to build garages. But also garages are basically economic black holes. They, yeah, they may generate some revenue and property tax and things like that, but they're not, they're not, when we put in, when the Navy put the garage in, so not only did we lose that from tax rolls, but, you know, there was no, there's no street-facing businesses. It's just a black spot. And there was some talk of them sharing that, and then that never seemed to meet fruition for use in the evenings. This is another one of those, you know, all approaches, you know. Can we get people to be able to bike safely to downtown and give them a secure place to keep their bike? Can we make transit better downtown? And, you know, can we massage sort of the parking that we have? That's my thought.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Ms. Rice. I think Councilmember Goodnow hit it on the head with a lot of this. Yeah, parking is a tricky issue. And one of the ways that you can help alleviate some of the parking issues is by utilizing the rail line that the federal government owns and using a jarstead park as a parking ride. And that's not the panacea. It's not the end-all, be-all, do-all. But that's one way that we could do this, and we could do this with a partnership through the Navy and the federal government. They own the rail line. They can provide some of their workers this facility, and we could do it in partnership with them. It's a property that we already own, and we could develop it into something that would alleviate some of the parking downtown. This could also be a benefit to us simply because it takes cars off the roadway and alleviates some of the congestion that comes in and out of the city. Now, this is, these are the kind of things that we should be doing. Like I said, it's not the end-all, be-all, do-all. It's just one solution.
Thank you. Ms. Mokler?
Well, I think there should be less parking downtown, but that's a completely unrealistic desire since there's absolutely nothing to replace it. There is not frequent bus service to downtown. And even moving from one place to another in downtown is just difficult without a car. So as everybody has stated, I think this is a tricky question. One possibility is to issue resident stickers to the people who live in Districts three and four so that they are able to park near their homes. I personally like the idea of us doing something that would be both fun and economically useful, like having a small double-decker bus that plays music that goes around and around downtown and goes out to the park and ride. And that would also have the merit of being able to bring in a new tourist group, which is the people out of Bremerton who would really like to participate in downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Younger?
Yeah, I'd like more than one minute, please. This one, as the other council members know, this, oh my goodness, what a thorny issue. But I can tell you that we are making progress. So we had, we spent quite a bit of money a few years ago on a parking study, and we took some of that and applied it, and some we didn't apply. One of the things we applied was license plate readers to be able to better enforce the people that are parking and reparking, if you will. We do have a residential parking program for those residents that are severely impacted. I'm thinking in the District three area, the downtown area. Another thing is we got the pandemic going on. So whatever stats we have going on right now are probably not really realistic going forward. The biggest thing to look forward to is our study with the Navy Department, and we're coming up with solutions, hopefully, for long-term fixes for our parking problem.
Thank you. And Ms. Chamberlain?
Oh, yeah, there's, so I used to work downtown. I used to work at Fresh Cut back when it was across the street where Starbucks literally is right now. It's been a difficult to find parking spots forever. They just keep taking more and more parking spots away. Now they're building this huge development that has no parking down below. What's it like? Why are we giving permits to large buildings with no infrastructure for parking when we already have a parking issue? We also have issues with urban sprawl. We don't want to become a concrete jungle and raise the temperature of our city, you know. So it's, we already, you know, we already have all these complex issues. And I, you know, really, we don't have great infrastructure. We're building it. I hear we're going to have Sunday service again, hopefully, in the next year, hopefully sooner. And we were in COVID. I don't want a carpool with just anybody. That's, it's complex, right? Really, I'm very concerned with large buildings being built into downtown core that don't have proper infrastructure for parking. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, candidates. That concludes our questions for the evening. So it's now time for closing statements, and as a reminder, each of you will have 90 seconds. We will begin closing statements with Mr. Coughlin.
All right. Well, thank you yet again to the League of Women Voters for hosting, everybody for attending, and to all my colleagues up here for, I mean, really a great community discussion. One of my strongest beliefs is that government works best when all voices are heard. We bring all the options to the table to address our most pressing issues. I've visited the doors of over 2,500 people in the district now, again, asking what they want to see better in our community and good things to make sure we keep going. I've visited small businesses, asking what they need from the city to thrive. And I've sat down with numerous local leaders and officials on how we can all work together for the betterment of our community. And as your city council person, this is what I'll continue to do. I'll have regular office hours, be available online at local events, host periodic town halls and pertinent topics. And, you know, if there's a new city project happening on your block, yeah, I plan on coming and knocking on your door and making sure you know about it and how to give your input. I won't pretend to have all the answers to the challenges we face, but I promise to consult the experts to make sure them and you can give input on upcoming council decisions. And I just know if we can get all these voices heard, we'll have great data to make the best decisions for our community. I've told you about my experience and take on the issues tonight. As I said, I've been active. We didn't get to talking about healthcare tonight, but I spent the past three city council meetings alone speaking about possible solutions to our healthcare situation in the county. So if you want to know more about me, you can go to my website, coughlinforcouncil.com, or just hit me up. I'm always happy to talk face-to-face or even camera-to-camera. But I know I have the experience, the passion, and the history involvement in our district to be the best person to represent you. So please vote Coughlin for council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goodnow?
Well, thank you all, everyone who helped put this together and participated tonight. It's been an honor to serve on council, and I have certainly picked up a wealth of knowledge. I'm proud of my voting record. I'm proud of what we've been able to accomplish at the city. I really like, you know, the conversations we have and how we get to consensus. You know, I think that a lot of the issues that we've touched on tonight kind of, you know, focus on this, you know, idea of making sure we're focused on really a lot of little issues, and it's not just one big fix that's going to fix it all. I've been putting some energy into the revitalization of Calhoun Avenue after we had completed an EPA study, and we're working with business owners in that area. And we're going to, you know, we have, one of the next steps is sort of incorporating that into the city's comprehensive plan. I think, you know, somebody, I think it was maybe Mr. Coughlin mentioned, Main Street. Main Street, I work for a Main Street in another city, and it's a level that we've been trying to get Bremerton to become a Main Street. It's a huge piece to have a good tourist space. If we can get Bremerton to get people to come here to spend money without having necessarily moved here to do it, it's a great way to do that. I am quickly running out of time. Thank you, everybody, and please consider me for District five. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Ms. Rice. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum and the audience members for attending. My fellow panelists, thank you for being here. So in the last year and a half, it's brought about significant changes for almost everything. Many have lost jobs, livelihoods, loved ones, and certainly a sense of normalcy. As we've been working to completely reopen our city, we've seen some of the fractured and divisive politics impede the daily lives of the good people of Bremerton. I've been dedicated to advocating for all Bremerton residents, not just those living in District six. And I promise to continue working tirelessly to reduce your tax burden and the operating cost of our government. I humbly ask you if your support in my bid for reelection to the Bremerton City Council as your representative. Remember, life doesn't happen at the speed of government.
Thank you. Ms. Mokler?
Thank you, and thank you for all of these questions and for going, sifting through them. I'd like to speak briefly about a couple of things that I really want to bring to Bremerton that weren't raised tonight. One is making Bremerton a more sustainable city, making it greener by protecting heritage trees, giving awards to gardens and urban farms, planting native trees on city property that can deal with our water regimen, fruit trees, native trees, compost bins, water cisterns, alter residents at low costs, expanding parks, compost facilities. These are measures that we're going to need to take, not just to make us a prettier town, which is a good goal, but to make us a more sustainable city in the face of the climate crisis and to become a more self-reliant city because the pandemic has surely shown us that supply chains can break down very quickly. Repair shops, victory gardens, the more we can have right here, the better off we're going to be down the line. And I'd like to touch again on respect for human rights and human dignity. When you and your neighbor respect each other, you don't have to call the police to get them to turn down their music. When you and your employer enjoy mutual respect, promotion and responsibility often will follow. When landlord and tenant act out of respect, rents paid on time and repairs are done as needed. Situations escalate much less often if both sides are trying to go for respect.
I have to interrupt you there. You are out of time.
Okay, but I'm going to steal the time to say thank you.
Okay. Mr. Younger?
Thanks. I won't use all my 90 seconds, so I probably could have granted Ms. Mokler some of my time. Hey, I just want to say thank you to all the residents of District seven for supporting me as your council member in the past. And I ask that you consider voting for me this November to continue as your council member. It's been an honor. I don't take it for granted. I don't take it lightly for those that have interacted with me, called me. Hopefully, you have found my response to your questions, your concerns to be responsive. I can't always give you what you want, but I'll try my hardest. And people that I've dealt with know that. One of the complaints I had when I became a District seven council member was there was too much emphasis downtown. And I agreed. If you go to my website or you look at the voter's pamphlet, you can see some of the things that I've done for District seven. And District seven is the largest district in the city of Bremerton. The tax base and size probably dwarfs all the other districts combined. I want to, for this next term, reach out to West Hills and other parts of District seven and see what kind of projects I can get through to help those folks as well. I'm proud of my work in restoring Kitsap Lake. I'm proud of the Safe House School project for Kitsap Lake Elementary. And look, I did use my 90 seconds. So, good night, everyone, and thank you, League of Women Voters.
Thank you. Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes, the sun has set. I'm now like this glowing creature here, so I'll try not to take too much time, too. I am looking forward to serving Bremerton. Hopefully, we'll be elected in November. And, you know, I think that what I really want to bring to city council is kindness, respect, building bridges, cooperation, compromise. And also, you know, for those of you Bremertonians who are out there who are struggling, you know, I mean, I'm there, right there with you, like digging for change in my seat cushion to pay for gas so I know what you're going through. And I, you know, I've just had a blast and been super humbled and appreciative of support that I've received, but also the doorbelling and meeting my neighbors and learning your stories. And I look forward to being a conduit for positive change for you. That's all I really have. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ms. Watkinsson?
Last but definitely not least, thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for providing this space so that we can hold open and honest dialogue and that our neighbors can learn more about their candidates and the candidates can learn more about what our constituents and stakeholders needs are for the questions that they've submitted. If there's anything that I want you to take away from this forum, it's that as your future council representative, I intend to do what it takes to have all community voices at the table and that my unique set of qualifications has prepared me to serve as a leader that is able to successfully and effectively work across departments and agencies to meet community needs. I'm honored to call Bremerton my home with my wife and our two dogs and to be able to have this opportunity to run for a position that can have such a meaningful impact in our community. Having worked for government, I know how meaningful and impactful it can be to do more public service work. I'm humbled to have earned the endorsement of the Native American Caucus of Washington State Democrats, the National Women's Political Caucus of Washington, the Bremerton Firefighters Union, and my former opponent, Johanna Schornberg, who is a local national security leader. I would like to invite our constituents and Bremerton neighbors to reach out to me at watkinsonforbremerton@gmail.com if you have any quick questions and concerns that I can help to address. And please vote for Melissa Watkins for Bremerton City Council, District three. Thank you so much.
Thank you, candidates. Voters, hopefully this forum has helped you choose a candidate. Ballots are arriving soon for the November 2nd general election, and the League is encouraging voters to return your ballots early. With thanks to Bremerton Kitsap Access Television, the League's forums are recorded and links to the videos will soon be on our website at www.lw-kitsap.org and also available on YouTube. BCAT will broadcast on Comcast Channel 12 and WAVE broadband Channel 3. So check out the local listings for that upcoming schedule. Please encourage others to view the forums and, most importantly, to vote. We would also like to thank the Kitsap Regional Library for helping to publicize our general election forums. Thank you again to our candidates for participating in our forum this evening. And thank you to each of our audience members for attending and for submitting such thoughtful questions. Now, I'll just simply say, please have a safe and pleasant evening. Thank you and good night.